If I may have your attention, I'd like to call the Opelika City Council Work Session to order. We have a couple of things that we would like to get done before we move into our regular meeting. The first thing is, we're happy to have the Honorable Joanne Camp with us. Joanne, you wanted to come and address the council?
I'm used to this being in the center in front of a judge.
Yeah.
First, I would like to apologize for not coming last time. I did come. I was all dressed up and ready to go, and I had a time walk, and I went to City Hall.
Couldn't you get in?
So this is, but this is my home. And secondly, I understand that this month's character trait is gratitude, and that's why I'm here. I want to thank each one of the council members for allowing me to serve the city of Opelika for as long as I have. There are some faces here that I know, but I know all of you, and it has been my joy. And I know that sounds like a funny term for being a public defender, but it has been a joy. It's been an honor. It has taught me a lot, this being in this court. You have to think on your feet because you know this is going to be filmed at you as things come out. So it's been good for my practice. It's been good for my legal education. I think you have made an excellent choice in my successor. Harold has been so, Harold Morris has been so wonderful to help me when I couldn't be here since I'm, you know, I was the only public defender in town. And since when I could not be here for whatever reason, vacation or illness, he was always the one to step in for me, question to question asked for the best part. So I think that he will be up and running in no time, and hopefully will give you the same service that I've been delighted to give you over these years. And I want to lastly tell you that all the city courts that I have practiced in by far, Opelika has been most professional. The clerks are excellent, helpful, they, and of course, devices just above all that I have dealt with little or late in my years. So, thank you again for allowing me to serve you, and
Joanne, I had asked Guy to speak to you on our behalf.
Well, I'd like to say that the city owes Joanne a deep gratitude for the service she has provided to the city. I think it's remarkable that one person could serve as public defender for almost three decades, and as she pointed out, I've been doing it longer than she has. Actually, I went to high school with Joanne's husband, Jimmy Camp, so I've known Joanne and Jimmy for a long, long time. And, but Joanne has vigorously represented people charged with crimes in Opelika City Court, and that's a very difficult job because these people are often in a difficult place in their lives when they come to City Court. City Court's not a place where people aspire to be. I can guarantee you that. But Joanne has represented the people not only vigorously, but with dignity and grace and common sense. And she has done all of that. She, if you don't know it, Joanne is bilingual. She is fluent in Spanish, and we have a growing Hispanic population in, in Opelika, and we now are seeing increasing numbers of Hispanic defendants in court, and Joanne can converse fluently with the defendants, which is really, has been a big help in City Court. And she's a very multi-talented person, so she will be greatly missed, and I don't know that anyone's can fill those shoes adequately, but we'll give it a good try.
Thank you, Joanne. Thank you very much. We also have Marty Moore here from the Opelika Theater Company. She has passed out something for each of us at the, on the podium. Marty, you wanted to address us.
Test, test, okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I am honored to be here tonight. I put something on your desk prior to me being up here. First of all, it's a thank you letter for supporting Opelika Theater and the things that the City Council and the city have done for us in the past several years. Secondly, the, the next thing that you will find on your desk is a document outlining the curriculum and the format that Opelika Theater has in place and has, we also have put our mission statement there, and I wanted to share with you that some very exciting, important things are coming to the city of Opelika. Just last week, Opelika Theater was honored to bestowed upon the opportunity to become the second chapter in the state of Alabama to become a Penguin Project chapter. The Penguin Project Foundation was formed by a Dr. Andrew Morgan over in Peoria, Illinois, who is a pediatrician, with the sheer purpose of giving children from the ages of 10 to 23 with developmental and neurological disabilities, the chance to participate and learn about performing arts, more explicitly to be able to participate in live theater. The Penguin Foundation has taken Opelika Theater under its wing. We are exclusive to this area for at least 60 miles. We will be able to tap into Columbus, Georgia, Troop County, Valley, Chambers County, Russell County. The only other closest Penguin Project chapter is Whitumka, Alabama, under the Whitumka Depot Players, who are very well-known throughout the state of Alabama. This project gives Opelika a place of notoriety in the state of Alabama, to be able to serve these people and these families, to be able to bring something here that will encourage more people to participate and come to Opelika. It will increase our revenue. It will increase our tourism, everything. It's going to take six months for me to get this completely in place, and the first rehearsal will not actually start for these children until July of 2023 because of the six-month timeframe that I have to get the volunteers ready and everything, you know, in a prospective place to go. Dr. Morgan and his team will come here. Opelika Theater does not have to invest anything in this project because they are going to come here and train us and our volunteers to be able to make this happen. And so, this time next November, it takes four months for these children to have a rehearsal. This time next November, these children will be able to produce a junior version of the musical Annie. So, that is a big, huge opportunity for Opelika. Also, starting in January, Opelika Theater is going to launch the creative aging for seniors theater and dance, which will tap into people 55 years and older. A lot of us are in that bracket, and it's going to help with getting people of that age group out and active in the community, giving them something to become socialized, helping their cognitive recognition skills, helping them to overcome depression. It does not have to do with anything that they have to memorize because everything will be given to them as readers theater or script in hand. Also, we are going to launch the Second Annual Black History Month Celebration in February, partnering with NAACP Actso and Reach Ministries, where we will have a three-day workshop showcase, celebrating black history and all of the artists who have come along throughout the era of the United States to bring art and the performing arts to this country. And one other thing that we have going for us is that the Missoula Children's Theater Tour, who has been around for 50 years, is now partnering with Opelika Theater to produce a summer camp in June that will also be exclusive to this area. None of the other organizations around here can acquire them because we already have them in place. And so, they are going to come in and work with our campers on a week's basis, and in one week, they will present a production of two shows. We have some scholarships available for these children so that nobody is left, you know, not being able to attend or participate in any of our programs. Our curriculum that we've set out already, from my curriculum that I have established, and this is just a small portion of it, we have established the acting and the musical theater classes called OACT Academy, where we train our actors and our students to be able to do musical theater. And already, some of my students are being paid to do regional theater over in Columbus. Some of them have already acquired scholarships with our program, and I just wanted to say, thank you to the city and to the council. This is a foundation and a dream that we had seven and a half years ago, to give this to the city of Opelika. This is all for the city of Opelika, the community of Opelika, and we have the ability to touch other surrounding communities and bring people and get them to know more about what we do. And if any of you had the opportunity to see our latest show, Newsies, we raised the bar very, very high. We had over 1,600 people see that show in a two-week span, and since last August, we have reached over 4,200 people coming to see our shows, and each show gets better and better and better because we have a standard of excellence that we want to continue to push forward for community theater here in Opelika. And this is your theater, not mine. It is Opelika City Theater.
Thank you very much.
And that's what I had to say, and thank you so much for believing in us.
We appreciate what y'all do. Thank you. Okay. As we get ready to move into the regular meeting, a couple of things. The ordinance, number one, we have been asked by the people involved to table that ordinance. They, they have a, a sales contract, and the sales contract isn't valid until next month, and so they, the part of the contract says, you know, don't make any of the putt until we do, until we do the closing. And then the second one, second ordinance, we have a request to suspend the rules on it. That deals with the election or the vote for the self, the school tax that's already in place. This is not a new tax. It would be a renewal. One other thing, citizens communication. We have been a little lax about communicating with the citizens when they were communicating over here. It is citizens communication and it's not citizens debate, so let's hold our comments until a different time that would be more appropriate. And finally, I remind you that these mics are live, and so if you don't want to be heard, you need to turn them off.
We do have one bid. We have one bid.
And we do have one bid. I wasn't going to leave Lily out there, especially when Joey raised his hand. Hi, Lily.
Good afternoon. We're asking the council to approve a contract for elevator maintenance, service, and repair. The bid opening date was October the 13th. The bid was mailed to six vendors. One bid was received. Recommend the contract. You're tomorrow at Elevator Company on their so-bid meeting specifications.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. That being done, I'd like to call the Opelika City Council Meeting of November the 15th to order. Call roll, please. Mr. Jones.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mr. Adrian.
Here.
Mr. Ruff.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
We're honored to have the Reverend Steve Bass from Trinity Methodist Church with us, and we'll ask him to make his way to the podium. And we have Kendall Cornley and Paul Dickerson from Carver Primary School. Are they with us?
Is that Kendall?
If you all would, would come up front, and she's going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. If you would please stand.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this great city that we call Opelika, the city that we call home. We're thankful that as we watch the news and travel and visit other places, Lord, that this city, we're, we're just so much more thankful for where we live. Well, we're thankful for what we stand for here in this small family community. We're thankful, Lord, for what you have done in our past and where you are leading us to in our future. Lord, as you have woven together this team of individuals to help represent and lead our city, I pray, Lord, that you would fill this place with your Holy Spirit, that you would give us an extra dose of wisdom beyond our own comprehension to make wise choices that will affect all and, and help us to be the best city that we can be. And Lord, as we discuss the business of our city, let us not forget, especially in, in, as we approach the holidays, those who the society has deemed as less than, those who are struggling, Lord, those who are in need of help, Lord, I pray that we would make choices that would help and honor those, Lord, in the way that we honor you. And so, Father, we ask that you join us now as we help make decisions that will guide us into a brighter, better future as a city. We love you, Lord. We thank you for all that you do, and especially thank you for your son, Jesus. In his name we pray tonight. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. You all have previously received a copy of the minutes of the November the 1st, 2022 council meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Here none. They'll stand as presented. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, members of the council, you have in your packet the financial report for the month of October. As always, if you have questions, don't hesitate to reach out to Cindy Boyd, Joey Mottley, or myself, and we'd be glad to talk with you about that. And speaking of Joey Mottley, he has the building permit report for October. Joey?
As you notice, your report has a little different look. We have gone to a new computer system, and we're working on formatting a report that will come right out of the system, but that's not complete yet, so we have gone back to the original page there. You should have permits for the month, which is also year-to-date. It's $53,232,757.60. If you'll notice the, that's the total for the, for the October month, and compare that to the other 10 years, and that's quite a large number compared to any other October over the last 10 years. And the details on the back, some apartments, some things, some, a lot of big developments going on. We had 43 new single-family homes. I don't, I don't see the bubble busting in Opelika yet. There's still a lot of, lot of houses being built, and it's a good indication of our economy. I'll be having questions. Thank you.
I'd like for Ken Warren, Ally Ruff, and Valerie Smith to join down front, please. How are you doing right here? You brought in security, didn't you?
I do, yes.
And I'm not that one.
Well, listen, we've got, of course, Ally Ruff is President and CEO of the Chamber. Ken Warren is the Executive Director of Opelika Main Street, and we're here to reclaim Small Business Saturday. Now, Ken, Valerie, one of your board members, but also one of our leading small businesses, but they've kind of got an unusual circumstance at the moment.
Yes, so Valerie with Southern Crossing, unfortunately, Southern Crossing was impacted by the July downtown fire, and so it just happened to be around the same time that Opelika Main Street was almost completed with our Downtown Resource Center, which includes a retail incubator portion. So, we invited, after they were impacted by the fire, Southern Crossing to be the first tenant in our retail incubator. And so, since October, they have been there in our building on, at 108 South H Street, and have done an amazing job turning that, that place all into the holiday season, into a great retail store. And we've had hundreds of people come through the store, and we really are, are great. It's great to be able to have a, a strong business like Southern Crossing back in downtown and able to provide that resource to them from a Main Street perspective.
Yes, and we appreciate everything the city and Main, Main Street Chamber have done to help us get back three months after the fire, so we're really excited.
I'm so proud of you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone ahead?
No, I'm just, I was there this, on Sunday for Holiday Open House, and just to walk in and experience all that Southern Crossing is, but in a new temporary space, was just very special. So, I'm very proud for y'all.
Thank you very much.
Whereas the city of Opelika celebrates our local small businesses and the great contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the U.S. Small Business Administration, there are 32.5 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees and are responsible for 62% of net new jobs created since 1995. Whereas 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community, and they really understand this, the Small Business Saturday. 70% report the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small, independently owned retailers, and 66% report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. That's a lot of statistics. And a lot of folks report they shop online with a small business. A lot of reports that they dine or order takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or cafe. And so, Small Business Saturday is an opportunity for all of us in Opelika to demonstrate our support for local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community. And advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday After Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Gary Fuller, Mayor of the city of Opelika, declare November 26th as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small business and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Allen.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is a great thing to have Southern Crossing's back open in our downtown, and so if you haven't been there to see the new facility, please take some time to do so. Citizens Communication, Mr. Jones.
Okay, now it would be time for you to speak. Mayor, Council, please go to my left over here. If you have not already, please sign into the sign sheet with your name, address, telephone, email. If you do speak, please state your name and your address. Please keep it five minutes less. I believe we have one public hearing. If you hear from a public hearing, please wait until that's, um, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Smith, as well as other members of the City Council, it's just a privilege to be here tonight to address you. I'm Mike Newman. I'm a member of Pepperell Baptist Church. I had a former pastor there. Our church has been in existence since 1926, when Pepperell Manufacturing Company erected the textile mill on First Avenue here in Opelika. And the founders saw the need for spiritual guidance and enrichment for its employees, as well as the, the village itself. And so, they were very instrumental in establishing two churches, a Methodist Church and a Baptist Church. Initially, those congregations shared the same building, but as they grew, they separated and places for worship for each church was erected. Pepperell Baptist Church, in its heyday, grew to over 1,000 members. One of the pastors that was instrumental in this growth was Reverend Billy Hunt. And since Pepperell Baptist was not on the beaten path, the church, under his leadership, made application with the state of Alabama in December of 1978 to gain a permit to erect a sign advertising the church, which fell under a statute that was enacted in 1971, known as the Highway Beautification Act Outdoor Advertising, which covered signs on private property. Permission was given by West Point Pepperell to erect a sign on their property. And if you remember the old mill, the mill when it was running, its location on, the old filter plant was the parcel where this sign was located. Not there at the filter plant, but on, on the highway, and it was just north of Pepperell Parkway. It was US 29 then. And today, it would be between Advanced Auto Parts and the new Drive Thru Smoothie Store. It was a four-by-eight double-faced sign that read Pepperell Baptist Church two blocks with an arrow pointing in the direction of the church, and the permit was granted in January of 1979, and the sign was erected. Years later, city of Opelika enacted their own regulations for signs on private property. And as the ordinance read, the church sign violated provisions or guidelines in that ordinance, but we were told that since our sign was there before the city's ordinance, that we would be grandfathered in, and we could keep our sign. The only stipulation was that we had to maintain it in good order and good condition. If we neglected it, or if it deteriorated to a point that it was no longer visible or practical, then we could not put it back up. As you know, the, the textile property was sold after the mill was shut down, but it was not immediately developed. The new owner or owners never objected to the sign that we, that our church had erected on that property. When development started, Hudman Construction was the original site prep contractor, and on several occasions, his workers and equipment knocked our sign down, and one of our members would go over there and have them put it back up. But finally, the sign was destroyed and done away with. Tried to get Mr. Hudman to accept responsibility, but he was very oblivious to what had taken place. After the construction was completed and the business were, businesses were established, I asked the mayor for help and I asked the mayor for help in getting a sign reestablished. And he was very cooperative and interested in helping. He even volunteered to contact the owner or owners to give permission to re-erect the sign. I still would like to, uh, exercise that option if this thing were to come to pass. And so Mayor Fuller consulted with Mr. Mosley, who was the city's planning director, for his opinion. We met on the site, all three of us, to get better understanding of what was involved. Long story short, Mr. Mosley concluded that since the sign had been taken down, it could not be put back up. He strictly interpreted the city's ordinance without regard for prior circumstances and our grandfather rights. And it was his opinion that since the sign was down, no matter the cause, it could not be put back. There was no wiggle room in his interpretation. Now, my question for the council tonight is how or why did we lose our grandfather's status when we had nothing to do with the sign coming down? We did everything that we were told to do to keep the sign in place and intact as long as it was under our control. Sign has a lot of value to us, even in, in our electronic age. People have come to visit our church on Sundays and, uh, first-time visit and would ask them, what brought you here today? They said, I saw your sign. And, and, and if, uh, or, you know, uh, if you don't know where the church is, just go down Pepperell Parkway and you'll see the sign. Now, this is the last thing. If we had taken the sign down or neglected it, I wouldn't be here tonight. I just want to know how did we lose our grandfather's status? Our permit with the state is still intact, still valid, and it's been renewed every year since its inception. And so I'm here tonight to ask for your help and, and to gain some hopefully common sense answers.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Others? Having none, we'll move on. General business, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President, first item under General Business is a request for temporary street closure from Opelika Main Street on November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. North.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Second item is a request for temporary street closure for Young Life Five K Event on December fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. North.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye. Third and final item is a public hearing for a we debatement assessment at nine fifteen York Avenue.
This is a public hearing. I declare a public hearing open. Anyone who'd like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare a public hearing closed. Bids, Ms. Finley?
I request the council to approve a contract for elevator maintenance service and repair. The bid opening date is October the thirteenth. The bid was mailed to six vendors. One bid was received. Recommend the contract to the award primary elevator company on their so-called lease specification.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. North.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolutions, Mr. Gunner?
Mr. President, the first resolution approves travel expense reports submitted by Denise Rogers of Municipal Court and Laura Hughley of Economic Development.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. North.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number two authorizes the mayor to dispose of a double-wide trailer as surplus municipal property.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. North.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number three authorizes the Public Works Department to purchase two grasshopper mowers from Mole Ridge Manufacturing at a total cost of twenty-two thousand four hundred two dollars and sixty cents.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. North.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number four authorizes the Parks and Recreation Department to purchase sports lighting for floral parks, soccer fields, uh, from Musco Sports Lighting LLC at a total cost of two hundred nineteen thousand dollars.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. North.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Uh, as you're aware, Ms. Joanne Kent has announced her retirement as part-time municipal pro, uh, defender and public defender. Uh, that will become effective on, uh, December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. You have before you a resolution to appoint Harold Morris to serve as public defender beginning January one, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. North.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number six approves a professional services agreement with LP Campbell Company for Grant Management Services in connection with the recreational trails grant, uh, the city received from the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs. The total amount of the grant was two hundred ten thousand dollars. Uh, LP Campbell's, uh, compensation for grant management services is twelve thousand dollars.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. North.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number seven approves an agreement between the City of Opelika and Next Request LLC for a subscription to, uh, software for the management of public records requests. Uh, pursuant to this, uh, agreement, the compensation, the annual compensation to be paid to Next Request is four thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. North.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Uh, resolution number eight approves a license agreement between the City of Opelika and Earl Dudley LLC. Pursuant to the license agreement, uh, Earl Dudley LLC will install a continuously operating reference station at City Hall. This will consist of a small antenna on the roof and a receiver box that will be located in the basement. And, uh, the city will receive, uh, seven, seven hundred dollars per year as compensation. Uh, this is a, um, um, this particular arrangement will benefit the city in that, uh, the city's engineering department, particularly its surveying, uh, crew can use the GPS, um, um, the GPS, uh, applications that are available through, uh, uh, Earl Dudley LLC. So it will benefit the city two ways. We receive compensation for the license and then it benefits our engineering department secondly.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. North.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number nine approves a diversity train, a contract with Diversity Training Group LLC for diversity, cultural inclusion, and anti-harassment training for city employees. Uh, the compensation to be paid to, uh, Diversity Training Group in connection with this contract is fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, the co, the resolution author, also authorizes an additional four thousand dollar appropriation for training materials and lunch, uh, to be provided to employees on training days.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. North.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number ten, uh, accepts a proposal and authorizes the award of a contract to Sane Associates Incorporated for Professional Transportation Planning and Engineering Services in conjunction with, uh, intersection analysis at Second Avenue at Tenth Street and Pepperell Parkway at Pleasant Drive. The compensation to be paid to Sane pursuant to this agreement is thirty thousand dollars.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. North.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Uh, resolution number eleven also accepts a proposal for Professional Traffic Engineering Services uh, submitted by Sane Associates for re-timing of existing traffic signals in the City of Opelika. This is phase two of their contract. Uh, the total compensation to be paid to Sane under this proposal is forty-eight thousand dollars.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. North.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Enthusiastically aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number twelve, uh, approves a quotation from CDW Government LLC for the city to purchase Cisco Surveillance Cameras and related hardware. The total compensation to be paid to CDW Government pursuant to this quotation is three hundred eighty-nine thousand seventy-seven dollars and ninety-two cents.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. North.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Uh, resolution number thirteen approves a engagement letter with Hemmerich, Hughley, and Bowles for auditing services. The total compensation to be paid, uh, to the accountants pursuant to this, uh, resolution is eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number fourteen approves a special-use permit in favor of level-up assets to construct a new one hundred forty-four-foot-tall monopole, uh, wireless tower to be located at six hundred Floral Street. This item is on the table and would require a motion to remove from the table to be considered this evening.
Is there a motion to remove it from the table?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Ms. North.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye to remove.
Now is there a motion to approve the request?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Discussion. So I just want to thank everybody who's, um, weighed in on this tower over the past few weeks, uh, on all sides of it. Received, uh, a lot of good information that, uh, truly made this a decision that, that came down to a few things, in my particular, uh, opinion. So, uh, and I, I do want to, uh, spell those out here for just a second. Number one, as, uh, we heard repeatedly, unfortunately, the, any safety concerns about the tower is, uh, outside of our purview. Uh, our ability to deny the tower for safety concerns of RF radiation would, uh, lead to, uh, us being sued for denying it for a reason that we can't deny it for. We'd have to then vote to fund legal defense using city money for a case that we would lose. And in my opinion, that seems like bad stewardship of tax dollars. Uh, number two, uh, in my opinion, it comes down to, uh, another thing, too. We've got areas that, uh, the tower can be in and if we can either use the location that is presented for us or, uh, we can use three or four other loca, other towers to cover the same location. I, I have to, uh, vote for efficiency in doing it, knocking everything out in one foul swoop rather than coming back and, uh, setting up four different towers. In addition, I'd say that, uh, when it comes down to the health effects, uh, since that is at, has been taken away from our purview via Congress granting the FCC dominion over that, uh, reach out to our new congressman, our new senator. Uh, talk to Senator-elect Britt, talk to Senator Tuberville, talk to Congressman, uh, Mike Rogers. He's been there for quite a while and has a lot of pull. They may be able to go ahead and, uh, influence the FCC to, uh, relook at these safety concerns. It's going to have to be at that level. Uh, unfortunately, a, at our level, we cannot push that. Uh, that's all I have.
Others? Call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. North.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries four ayes, one nay.
Resolution number fifteen approves a special-use permit in favor of AT&amp;T to modify its equipment on an existing, uh, one hundred ninety-foot-tall self-support tower located at thirteen fifteen Madison Avenue.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, if I may, this is, the, this is the, the frustration. We have a lot of these permits that we have put up that we have special-use permits. If we are constantly requesting special use for specialized, you know, the special request for these permits, what is, Guy, what is the, the reason for the special request? Is it location? Is it to residents, I'm guessing?
Well, in this case, the, the, the carrier wishes to modify the equipment on the tower. So we're looking at it from a safety standpoint. Would it be safe to allow them to modify the equipment?
Okay.
In, in, in other words, would it change the structural safety of the, of the wireless tower to do that?
So they already have a special-use permit and...
They already have one. This is just to modify the equipment on the existing tower.
Is the, is the tower too close to residential? Is that why it requires a special use?
No. Anytime that a company wants to modify the equipment on the tower, it requires a special-use permit and a review by the city.
Got it.
Our consultant looks at those requests very closely and, uh, makes recommendations to the city council.
Absolutely.
So, uh, in this case, our consultant has recommended approval of the special-use permit.
Good. Okay. Yeah. I mean, that's, I, I don't like it when people are talking about the city being unsafe in a lot of this. The, the permitting and, and the whole process through this. That's the biggest frustration is because it, it is safe and we, we do this routinely. Um, so I appreciate your service and everything you do.
Others?
I also just want to speak to that, too. Um, I'm glad that you clarified that this is a safety issue and we want to make sure that we keep the, the city safe. Um, and just to piggyback on our previous, um, vote in regards to the, the tower, that was my purpose for voting nay as well. And I also wanted to give a voice to the citizens who overwhelmingly came forward and said that, uh, they did not want the particular tower. Now, I do understand...
Point of order, Mr. President, this is not germane to the current...
I do understand this...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm talking about safety.
I know, but there's a point of order about the, the conversation going back to the previous, um, resolutions, so.
Okay, thank you. So I'll, I'll carry on about the current, uh, issue. So, um, I'm think, I'm glad that you did, uh, verify and confirm that this particular issue in regards to this special permit that we're talking about currently is in regards to safety because I do also want the community to know that safety is our top priority for our citizens here in the City of Opelika. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Others? Call roll, please.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number sixteen approves a special use permit in fa- in favor of Horizon Wireless to modify its equipment located on a existing, uh, wireless tower located at Ten Veterans Parkway.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number seventeen approves a weed lien in the amount of one hundred thirty dollars sixty-four cents against the property located at nine fifteen York Avenue.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Uh, resolution number eighteen i- is a resolution to approve a contract for services to be entered into between the City of Opelika and the Arts Association of East Alabama. The compensation to be paid to the Arts Association pursuant to the contract is twenty-five thousand dollars. This item, uh, was tabled and would require a motion to remove from the table to be considered this evening.
Is there a motion to remove it from the table?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, is there, um, excuse me, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen. Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Now is there a motion for approval of the, um, contract?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Yes, um, but my understanding is that this was, there were some issues surrounding this particular contract.
So, uh, for this one, we, uh, there's a meeting scheduled between, uh, President Smith I and, uh, East Alabama Arts, uh, leadership next Tuesday to just get some background information on, um, uh, operations governance a- and just kind of, uh, have a discussion with them and kind of, so, um, I'd like to motion to re-table this, uh, once the, uh, discussion, uh, is completed. If anybody else has got any other, uh, anything else they'd like to say, but did want to let everybody know that, uh, we are moving forward with discussing, uh, with East Alabama Arts. Uh, unfortunately, schedules over the last couple of weeks, uh, both theirs and ours have been, uh,
So we're voting to approve the contract prior to the discussion?
No, I'd, I'd move to, uh, I'll move to re-table.
Oh, this is a mo- you're moving to re-table?
Yeah, I'm gonna move to re-table, but I don't want to step on anybody's toes if anybody has anything else they want to say first.
Okay, before we entertain this motion, does anybody else want to, want to address this issue?
Um, I do have another comment or a question. Would, will you be providing us an update on the outcome of the meeting as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Others? Okay, so you making a motion?
Motion to table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye to table.
Resolution number nineteen approves a contract for services between the city and the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Lee County. The amount to be appropriated to this agency for this fiscal year is forty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
For many, many years, the, uh, East Alabama Healthcare Authority, which is, uh, doing business as East Alabama Medical Center, has provided, uh, ambulance services for the City of Opelika. You have before you resolution number twenty, which, uh, approves the renewal agreement between East Alabama Healthcare Authority and the City of Opelika for emergency response, rescue, and ambulance services. The amount to be paid for these services for this year is three hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred forty dollars plus an additional sixty thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars, uh, to replenish the capital account. Capital accounts used to buy ambulances, equipment, and things of that nature.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number twenty-one approves a contract for services between the City of Opelika and Opelika Theater Company. The amount appropriated to this agency for this fiscal year is five thousand dollars.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, if I may, um, while there's stare here, um, Libby and, uh, Marty, thank you so much for everything you do in our community. And I've seen personally the, the growth that has happened and I appreciate it.
Others? Call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Uh, resolution number twenty-two approves a special appropriation in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars to, uh, envision Opelika, uh, on behalf of the, um, worthy squared, uh, organization. The purpose of this appropriation is to provide support services to children and youth who are victims of sexual exploitation.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Avenine call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Ordinances, Mr. Gunnar.
Mr. President, the, uh, first ordinance is before the council for second reading. This is an ordinance to amend the zoning map for the City of Opelika by rezoning eight point nine two eight acres, uh, from an M-one district to a PUD. This property is located on the former Lesnar Mill site and would be developed as forty-two cottage-style single-family homes. The applicant has requested that the city council table this item until it has done all of its due diligence with respect to the purchase of the property. So if the council would like to table, we'll need a motion to that effect.
So moved. Oh. Go ahead.